City Council, eight o'clock, please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, the interim police chief, Bob Hayden, I'm sure you've heard, was injured in a vehicle, bicycle vehicle accident, and he is in the hospital, so, you know, we're going to wish him a speedy recovery, and we hope that he recovers quickly. Mr. Clerk, if we could go to number one, please, on the agenda.
The appointment of David Offutt, 39 Torrey Street, Brockton, Cemeteries and Boards of Trustees, five-year term ending June 2019.
That is referred to Finance Committee.
The appointment of Rob May, 220 School Street, Apartment 2, Somerville, for the position of Director of Planning and Economic Development for the city of Brockton, for a five-year term ending June 2019.
That, too, is referred to Finance Committee.
Petition of National Grid, proposing to intercept nine-foot, four-inch conduits, concrete-encased, and redirect to switchgear manhole 276-1 Transformer Pad, location on Montello Street.
Time hasn't arrived, I declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, please come forward to the podium, state your name for the clerk. Anyone here in favor? Counselors, do I want to entertain a motion to put this later at the agenda?
Motion to move it to the end of this City Council meeting.
Motion made properly, seconded, Agenda Item Number Three, we're going to take it to the end of the hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, our motion carries. Mr. Clerk, number four, please.
Petition of 1260 Main Street LLC for an underground storage license located at 1260 Main Street, in City Clerk's office, June 5, 2014. Hearing assigned for June 23, 2014. All the necessary paperwork is on file, and the Fire Department has no objections.
Time hasn't arrived, I'm going to declare this hearing open. If there's anyone here in favor, please come forward and state your name to the clerk. Good evening, sir.
My name is Ghazi Saab. I'm the running manager of that 1260 Main Street LLC.
Counselors, any questions?
I'm Counsel Ossinski, Ward Four. I didn't get your name, sir.
My name is Ghazi, G-H-A-Z-I, last name is Saab, S-A-A-B.
Oh, Mr. Saab, okay. I've done business at your establishment, you have a great place there. This is one underground storage, but you already have gas. Is this an extra one now, or?
No, no, it's, uh, we did not apply for the license. We kind of somehow missed to apply for that license, and we're running the station, and the Fire Department had asked us to just go ahead and get the underground storage license.
Thank you very much. I make a motion for a favorable recommendation.
Counselor, we're just going to continue. Is there anyone here else in favor of this matter? If so, please come forward and state your name. Anyone here in favor? If not, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone here in opposition? If so, please come forward and state your name to the clerk. Anyone here in opposition relative to this matter? Seeing none of this matter, that part of the hearing is closed as well.
My apologies, Mr. President. I'd make a motion at this time for a favorable vote on this particular license.
All in favor of granting a license, raise your hand. All opposed, license is hereby granted. Thank you, sir.
Petition of Boston Hospitality Group LLC for a garage license located at 444 Main Street, in City Clerk's office, May 23, 2014. Hearing assigned for June 23, 2014. All the necessary paperwork is on file, and the Fire Department has no objections.
Time hasn't arrived, I'm going to declare the hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? If so, come forward.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President. Attorney Jake Creedon, 71 Legion Parkway, Brockton, representing the Boston Hospitality LLC. Mr. Ronan Drury, who is the owner of another on Pearl Street, can't be here tonight, I always have my client come, but his two-year-old son has a hole in his heart, and he had children hospital surgery in the past week, so I apologize for that, but I think I can answer any questions that anyone would have on this situation. It's the old Teen Challenge at 444 Main Street, next to the old Brockton Cafe. It is presently open and now owned by Ronan's LLC. It has been recently, in the last three weeks since he's owned it, been upgraded with almost $50,000 worth of renovations, which included video cameras, three new video cameras for the city, which would certainly help the crime art situation. He has resurfaced the parking lot down there, if anybody's been there. The dumpster is in place, I have viewed it a couple of times, in place, and it's a proper one, it's got the fencing and all of the other stuff. It's unusual that there is a need for a garage license for a car wash, but nevertheless, the best I can tell you is that Chapter 148 authorizes the City Council, and of course other legislative bodies like Selectman and what have you, to grant a license for a number of things, including, it says, a garage. Now, the purpose, and again, you've got to take my history on this situation, not only as a former City Councilor, but as a Councilor who appears in a lot of these situations, there is, that is basically, that statute is basically a safety and fire statute, because storing of cars inside buildings obviously is a flammable and combustible situation. I can tell you that the car wash is not going to store any cars inside, it's a drive-through, but nevertheless, we have no problem applying for it, because we were requested to do that when he purchased it, and again, he's run, he runs several businesses in Brockton, including some gas stations, owns them, so I would request approval of this situation, and be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Attorney Creedon. Any questions for the attorney?
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Mr. President, through the City Clerk, Mr. Ziole, personally, I don't remember ever, ever, given a car wash, a garage license. Can you shine a little light on this? I mean, I don't have a problem giving him a license for a garage, but we have never, ever given, I mean, when Teen Challenge took over the car washes, both the north side and the south side, they weren't in front of the council for a garage license. Is this a new procedure?
No, it's just a question as to whether or not that particular car wash may want to store a vehicle inside at one time or another overnight.
Okay.
And if they have no desire to do so, then they wouldn't file for that garage license.
Counselor, Donapoli, if it would help, I know, going way back to 1950, when it was built, and then the Balbonis had it for years, there was no garage license there either, but as the City Clerk has said, if there were to be, and I'm just playing this scenario out, if there were to be a couple of cars, for whatever reason, that got stored there at night, and there was a fire, there'd be a big insurance claim, and there'd probably be some sort of a disclaimer if they didn't have a garage license. That being said, 148, the statute does indicate that the authorization is for two or more vehicles stored in a garage. Correct?
My other question to the clerk is, we have more than, there are many car washes in Brockton. Are we going to require the rest of them to come in and get a license?
The question again would be whether or not they're going to store more than two vehicles overnight.
Okay, all right. Mr. Clerk, thank you, and Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor.
Also through you, to City Clerk Ziole, could you look into the other car washes in the city and make an inquiry as to if they are storing vehicles inside, and if they are, inform them that they need to come before the council for a permit?
I could certainly do that.
I would really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President.
Consigliere.
Thank you. Attorney Creedon, I think one of the, I think one of the issues pertaining here would be if that particular car wash, or any car wash, was doing some extensive detailing work to a vehicle, and a vehicle was to be left there overnight, pretty much, I mean, that's the way I would look at it, because today, a lot of car washes do detailing work, which is a comprehensive cleanup of a vehicle. They may want the vehicle to be there overnight, so they can start on it at seven or eight in the morning. That could be a reason why a vehicle could be left there.
That is a good point, however, the modern detailing situation, because I represent, I think, at least two of the other car washes, is what they call express detail. It doesn't take more than, let's say, 30 minutes. If there were a situation, though, it's possible that, again, just as you stated, the next morning, they might leave a car in overnight, which has combustible gas in it, so it makes sense. And I do know that, I do represent Westgate, Sunny Aristotamian up there, and Ronan owns the other place on Pearl Street, so I'm sure I can find that information out for the City Clerk and for you, Counsel Dubois.
Thank you.
Right away.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duke.
To the council, too, you must recall, if you've been to any of these car washes, that all of them do not have the area to store vehicles.
Right.
So that's why you have many car washes that don't have the garage licenses. So we have very few that have an area to store vehicles, but I would still look into that for you.
Thank you.
And I don't want to open a can of worms, but all of the car washes have some flammable soaps and suds, that may be the reason.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Attorney. Any else, any other questions, Counselors, for Attorney Creedon? Anyone else here in favor? If so, come forward and state your name to the clerk. Anyone here in favor? Seeing none of that part of the hearing is going to be closed. Anyone here in opposition relative to this item? Come forward, sir, if you can state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Ortes Van Dross of the Full Gospel Tabernacle Church, 452 Main Street, and I have received a letter of the abutting property on 444 Main Street. Our church has been established there for over 60 years, and we are familiar with the transition of management from Balbonis to Teen Challenge. My question to you, or to the council is, where is this garage going to be located on their property? As again, our church has been there for a number of years, I don't know if it's going to be abutting our property or somewhere else.
Pastor, it's, there is no new garage, it's just whatever's freestanding there, the property is what it is right now.
Okay.
It's a car wash, but, and Attorney, you can answer this if you want to, and to the record.
The building, it will be exactly as it is, and the car wash will run just ahead, for Balboni and for Teen Challenge.
Excellent. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Pastor. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it.
Anyone here else in opposition? Anyone here in opposition? Seeing none of that part of the hearing is closed.
I do have a question, I'm sorry. So if, Attorney, hi. So if there's not going to be a garage, as I understand, so it's just for cars to be able to stay inside the go-through?
It is, Counsel, the definition of a structure, in our own ordinances and in the state law, describes that building. It's concrete and wood, therefore it's a structure, therefore it's a building, therefore it's a garage. The difference is here, as the counsel said, it's a drive-through, it's not, it's not an auto repair, one of the ones that would require the overnight situation, and we don't intend to do that. If it, if it happened, it would be, you know, casual and accidental, because somebody had to have their car detailed at seven, that couldn't be finished the night before at the closing hour. I just don't think that's ever happened, but, you know, that's probably the reason. Building is not changing whatsoever.
Just a characterization, it doesn't mean it's going to be garaged at the, okay, all right, I just wanted to verify.
That has to come back before you, if anybody changed that use to something else.
Okay.
It's going to run, in fact, it is running exactly as it did when Teen Challenge had it.
Okay, I see, thank you.
With $50,000 in improvement so far to date.
Thank you, Attorney. Matter now comes before us. All in favor of granting, Counselor?
Quick question, sir. Mr. President?
Sure.
Mr. Creedon, just a quick question. What's to prevent this, this business from, two weeks after getting this license, to begin to do automotive repairs on that site?
The building department and all of the enforcement officers, you have to have a garage license first of any of the businesses, but you must have an auto repair, or if you're doing further things like spraying, you have to go before the City Council and get all of that. You must then answer to you people as to how many cars you're going to store inside and outside, and what if any protection viewing, and this place is surrounded by six-foot, what they call slats, all around the fence, so there's no view in, you know, obstructing any ugly view of the thing. And the church is a good neighbor next door, and certainly my client is not going to, in any way, change the operation, other than improve what it looks like, and he's done that already in the last three weeks. Redid the parking lot, repainted the building, put the video devices in, has cleaned the whole place up.
Because I think the fear that I sense, even coming from the Reverend, is the fact that you're being granted a license to operate a garage now, not just to store, but it's a garage license, and unless there's some restrictions in there to prevent that business from operating a garage, as everybody else would operate a garage.
That's an easy answer, Counselor. You can restrict it to no cars, or two cars, or 50 cars. We're not interested in storing cars in there at all. So that's your prerogative, to restrict it to as many cars inside and out as you want, overnight, and there'll be none, so.
Through the chair, through the chair to the Counselor. This is strictly a garage license. This has nothing to do with the repair of vehicles, nothing whatsoever. You can have a garage license on a residential piece of property if it stores more than two or three vehicles, if you so desire, but it does not give you the right or the ability to repair vehicles. That is a separate license, and that's in two parts. One is a mechanical repair, the other is a body repair.
Correct.
But a garage license is strictly to store vehicles overnight, nothing more than that.
Therefore, if that was happening, Counselor, the building department would come down with an enforcement office and say, you're repairing, or you're doing body work, you can't do it, you need a separate license, which comes before this august body.
Mr. Chairman, how do we, how do we go about putting some sort of a restriction on this?
Counselor, you can make a motion.
Well, then I, I mean.
Go ahead, car wash only.
First of all, you can't put a restriction on it.
Through the chair to Counsel Rodriguez, I believe what you would do is write it down on paper, what you would like to restrict the number of vehicles inside and outside to, then you make a motion to amend and insert a stipulation, then the council votes on it, and then it becomes part of the council order.
Counselor, Legislative Council is going to pipe in if he could.
A garage license, as Attorney Creedon stated, is a license issued under Chapter 148, and it runs with the land, and you can't restrict what they do outside the garage. You can do that when you have a motor vehicle repair license, and what Counsel Dubois just referenced is the restrictions you typically would put on, on an automobile repair or body shop license.
Okay.
So if they ever came back and they wanted to apply for a motor vehicle repair license, you certainly could put those restrictions on at that time.
Yeah, I think my, my issue was just that we wanted to make sure that we put the community at ease, that we're not licensing a, a car wash that next week will become a car wash slash auto body repair. That's what the concern was. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor, comes before us now. All in favor of granting a license?
On the motion. I have a question, actually. It's just, it's just piqued my interest, what the, what the City Council's attorney has just said. I was always under the, under the understanding that you could put stipulations on a garage license, so.
Counselor, please stand, we're in City Council.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't realize that was, that was a rule.
Well, it is, you should, you've been here nine years, like I have, yeah.
Yeah, but you didn't tell anybody else, but thank you very much for that help.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So you're telling me that if I were to allow a garage license in Ward Six, they could put as many vehicles as they wanted in it? Is that what you're saying? There's no stipulation? Then what does it mean?
First of all, the council grants a license.
Yep.
It's not allowed, they grant a license, and depending upon the size of the garage dictates the number of vehicles.
Who stipulates that?
They stipulate it in their application.
And how many did they stipulate?
Fire Department reviews it and signs off on it.
How many did they stipulate in this application?
Zero.
So there's zero stipulated in this application?
Not storing any cars at all.
So it's written?
It's a drive-through, it's a, it's a long corridor with a track.
But it's written zero in the?
Yeah, that's the application, because we're a, we're a car wash.
Great, so thank you very much.
But to get back to the issue of a garage license, you get a garage license first, any other use that you want to put in there that is licensed by the City Council or any other body in this city, has to be applied for, and then you do get to restrict inside-outside storage. Isn't that correct?
Oh, no, I really appreciate that. My question was just that if I were to get a garage license at a piece of land that I owned, how would that be stipulated as to how many cars I could hold in it? That's all I was asking. And I think that's what my fellow counselor was asking, but it seemed like in the first answer, it was up to the owner, and now, what you've explained is that the Fire Department sets that number? Or, or does the person, when they apply, write in the application, we have a plan to put 20 cars in here, five cars in here, or, how does that work out?
The applicant submits on the application the number of vehicles they seek to obtain a license for, and the Fire Department certainly reviews all the applications and inspects the premises.
Great, thank you.
Counselor, matter comes before us. All in favor of granting a license, raise your hand, please. All opposed, motion carries, license is hereby granted. Number six, please. Thank you, Attorney.
Here we go again. Petition at Teen Challenge, New England Inc., for a garage license at 1085 North Montello Street. In City Clerk's office, April 28, 2014. Hearing assigned for June 23, 2014, at 8:00 P.M.
Time hasn't arrived, I'm going to declare the hearing open. If there's anyone here in favor, please come forward and state your name to the clerk.
Attorney John McCluskey, 932 Main Street, representing Teen Challenge, and I'd like to thank Attorney Creedon for his eloquent explanation of why I want a garage license at 1085 North Montello, for all the same reasons.
Thank you, Attorney. Any questions for the attorney? Counsel Dubois.
Not the same question.
Oh, it is a similar question. How many cars do you have in your application to store inside?
When I applied, the, I was asked by the Clerk's office how many cars we want to store, and my answer was zero.
Great.
But, the application fee was determined by a minimum of five, so I said, okay, we'll file. We have to pay the fee, that's what you want on the application, but in reality, we're not storing any cars. If I bring my car to the car wash to be washed, I don't think it's going to be stored overnight there.
But yours says five. Yours says five.
They both say, they both, I think they both, well, at least the fee, the fee is based upon five, but it's, we're not storing cars there.
But your, your application said, what we're voting on is allowing this building to have five vehicles.
I don't know what, quite frankly, I don't, I don't remember what it says. I had to pay a fee for five, because that was the minimum fee.
Okay, so yours could be five?
I would prefer to pay a fee for zero.
So yours could be five, or it could be zero? It's either, it's between zero and five?
I can, I can guarantee you that there'll be no cars stored in this property. I think the theory was, we could have, the lady asked me at the desk, how many, how many cars could you fit in the tunnel? She said, could you fit five? I said, probably, but they're all going home in 20 minutes, or 10 minutes.
So does that mean that the previous one was for five as well, and it's, or zero?
Probably.
I just, I'm just trying to get straight information, that's all.
We've already gone past that, and I believe, and to the record, they said zero.
They said zero.
Yes.
So let's hope that that was accurate. But yours is five.
No, the fee says five.
Okay.
I had to pay a fee based upon, I think you can get a license for 20, the fee's higher, so the minimum fee that we had to pay was for five. And as I say, I wanted to pay a fee for zero.
And on the application, it said five? Do you have the application? I'm just trying to get my head around this, this is all new. I've never had, we've never had this come before.
Well, it's, it's just what the attorney said, they put five over time, but it's zero to five that they're paying for.
It does say maximum number of cars in garage, in a, not applicable car wash, and then five in at one time.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any other questions for the Counselor?
I actually do have a question. This particular establishment, just so I can be clear, this Teen Challenge, 1085 North Montello, where is that? I just need to put it in my head. Which one is that? Where's the next two?
It's, it's almost to Avon. It's way up, as you're heading up North Montello on the right. It was, incidentally, this was a, before Teen Challenge bought it, and they've been operating both of these for years without a garage license, as have everybody.
Right.
And when they went to sell it, the question was raised as to, do we need one? I asked at City Hall, I actually asked Lieutenant Williams, and he says, oh, yeah, I think we do, but, so we filed. But at this 1085 North Montello, it was a wreck of a place. They put, they put a lot of money into it, cleanup costs, it was really quite an expense.
Okay, and, and that actually leads me to my next question. Those establishments have been there for some time, so for just now, them to come to ask for this garage license, that's kind of where I have a little bit of pause. Why now, after they've been operating as car washes, successful car washes for some time, especially the one on Main Street?
Because, because Ronan, the one who bought, Ronan Drury, who bought 444 North Montello, insisted that we get a garage license, and, and so here we are.
Okay. And he owns other car washes in other places, correct?
He owns the one up on North Pearl Street, and owns the gas station down on Warren Ave, owns car washes in Taunton and South Dartmouth, I think.
Does he store cars at any of his other locations?
You don't store cars at car washes. You wash them.
It's just the answer, right, but he can. I'm, I'm just saying, it just, if you kind of follow my thinking, it just, I'm just really curious as to why now, after all of these things, they've been established for a while, that they're going to?
Quite frankly, I, I don't think we really need to be here, but we wanted to sell the property, so he wanted a garage license, so.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions for the attorney? Anyone else here in favor? If so, come forward, state your name to the clerk. Anyone here in favor? Seeing none of that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone here in opposition? Anyone here in opposition about this? If so, come forward, state your name to the clerk. Seeing none of that part of the hearing is closed. Counselors, all in favor of granting a license? All opposed, license is hereby granted.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of June 16, 2014.
That is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor submitting his commentary on the fiscal 15.
That, too, is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass General Laws, recommending the approval of the City Council for a net metering power purchase agreement between Nugent Capital Management, the city of Brockton. This agreement is for the purchase of solar power for a solar plant, which will save the city in electricity costs.
That, too, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO, relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief of Police, requesting authorization to expend grant funds related to the Old Colony Planning Council, fiscal 14, sustained traffic enforcement program for pedestrian bicycle safety.
That is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Counselor's also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO, relative to the same.
That, too, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief of Police, requesting for authorization to expend grant monies related to fiscal 13, Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assisted Grant, any amount of $89,969.70.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
CFO, relative to the same.
That, too, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Assistant Auditor, certifying is of June 17, 2014. The balance of the stabilization fund is $2,402,245.87.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, recommending the City Council authorize the appropriation, any amount of $130,000, from the stabilization fund to the MSBA accelerated repair program for Ashfield Middle School, Barrett Russell School, Brookfield School, Gilmore School, Early Childhood Center, and audit provide funding to collaborate with the MSBA in conducting a feasible study for potential roof, boiler, window, and door replacement at the named schools.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO.
That, too, is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, recommending the City Council authorize the mayor to execute the intermunicipal agreement with the town the city council authorize the mayor to execute the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Abington. The 20-year agreement replaces the contract for sewer treatment services which has been in place for many years. It simplifies the billing calculations while retaining the concept that Abington will share in the fashion of a common user and the cost of the sewer enterprise budget allocated to the town on the basis of the town's metered flow as a percentage of the total flow at the plant. It also grants the town an additional allocation of 500,000 gallons per day, subject to regulatory approval. The present allocation is 1 million gallons per day. This allocation, if used, would generate almost $500,000 in additional revenues for the city at this year's cost.
That is accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Also accepted and placed on file, councilors.
We have the appointment of Judge Fiss, 238 Court Street, Brockton, to the Brockton Board of Health for a three-year term ending June 2017, and council May 27, 2014. Refer to the committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on confirmation by a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azak. Yes.
No.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stidinski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
No.
Nine in the affirmative, two in the negative.
Appointment is hereby confirmed, councilors.
An appropriation of $2,308,78 from available funds Brockton Chapter 90 apportionment for fiscal 15 to highway transportation project funds, in order to provide funding for the purpose of the design and construction costs necessary for approved projects. And council May 27, 2014. Refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Councilors, questions on adoption by a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azak. Yes.
Burns. Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
No.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stidinski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative, one in the negative.
Appropriation is hereby adopted.
Mr. President.
Councilor Ioneary.
I move for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail on item number 23.
Motion for reconsideration, hopes it doesn't prevail, and it was properly second. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Motion for reconsideration does not prevail.
An appropriation of $22,000 from Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Local Action Research Grant to City of Brockton Police Department, EOPSS, Year Six Local Action Research Partner Grant Fund. And council May 27, 2014. Refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Cruz. Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stidinski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Appropriation is hereby adopted.
Appropriation of $741 from the Mass. Emergency Management Agency, HMEP Grant, to Brockton Emergency Management Agency Grant Fund. The intended use for this grant is for a think pad. And council May 27, 2014. Refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Cruz. Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stidinski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Appropriation is hereby adopted, councilors.
An appropriation of $1,525 from Mass. Emergency Management Agency, SHSP Grant, to Brockton Emergency Management Agency Grant Fund. The intended use of this grant is to purchase equipment to build a community emergency response team. And council May 27, 2014. Refer to standing committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Councilors, questions on adoption by a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Cruz. Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stidinski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Appropriation is hereby adopted, councilors.
Audit for the budget of fiscal 2015. And council May 27, 2014. Refer to the committee on finance. That report is favorable as amended.
Councilors, we made some amendments coming out of the Finance Committee. Have to take a vote on those amendments.
Amendment would be to reduce Treasury's debt account by $100,000. Reduce from $13,106,977 to $13,6,977.
Want to take a roll call on that? Roll call vote on the amendment.
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
No.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois. Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
No.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
Stidinski.
No.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, five in the negative.
Let me carry. Councilors, now the question is on the budgets for the DPW Department.
Mr. President?
Counselor.
If I might, Mr. President, and if anybody, any other councilors wouldn't mind, I do have a question for Mr. Condon before we continue in regards to something with the budget, if we could, if I could ask him that.
Anybody have any objections to the Ward Three Counselor? Seeing none, Mr. Condon's in attendance.
Thank you. I'll give Mr. Condon a moment to come to the forefront.
Mr. Condon, something that came to my attention and caught my eyes and ears was the other evening when I was listening to the school department, as they had their budget subcommittee meeting, I believe it was held last Thursday evening, and only hearing from the background of a question that was posed to Aldo Patronio, and it was in regards to the hotel motel tax. Now, I wasn't hearing him clear enough because he wasn't microphoned, but I did hear a comment being made in regards to the revenues in regards to hotel motel tax coming in for the next fiscal year, maybe even in light of what we have coming in for the balance of this fiscal year that we're closing out of. But I did hear somewhere, and I thought, and I could be wrong, so somewhere, could be somewhere a reduction of like $750,000, and that could be pertaining to the fact that several of our hotels and motels in this city are now taking on more of homeless families. I don't want to say homeless people, but homeless families. And as you know, and as we know as councilors, that when that happens, I mean, there are children involved, but yet we still have to send these children to school and educate them as well. And I know the hotel motel tax is important to us on this side as well because we're not, I mean, we're really using a good, large piece of that in how we keep the stadium operating, if I'm correct, am I right? So I'm just trying to find out what, and I couldn't hear it all, and I did place a call over there today, but Aldo must have been busy, and it was later in the day, I was wrapped up myself. I'm just trying to fathom out what they were talking about, and they said they had it in a letter, but maybe it's something we can just take a look at. I don't think it's going to have any effect on how we vote this evening, but I'm concerned.
Right. Well, I don't think, I don't think the budget relies on the full receipt of the hotel motel tax, so I don't think it jeopardizes the budget. I think what Aldo might have been talking about is that the, and I don't know if this is true or not, but what I've heard is that the placement of homeless families in there at the cost of the state results in what would normally be the city's payment of the room excise tax not being paid because the state isn't paying.
Right, okay.
So I don't think all the city's hotel rooms are subject to that, so the amount that was stated, 750, sounds excessive to me, but I can check into it.
Yeah, could you please, and maybe, you know, get back to us and give us some information on that? I'm just concerned about it because it's still, it's revenue, about a part of budget in a way, but it's revenue that, you know, the city relies on, so it just, looking at some concern.
And if it's true, I would say I don't think it's a proper thing for the state to do.
Exactly. I won't disagree with you on that. Yeah, and, but...
I mean, not the placement, but to not pay the city's excise taxes.
I'm just concerned, the more and more homeless families you have living in hotels and motels, it's definitely going to drain, you know, the resource that we use as well, so...
Well, we've had a long discussion in this budget season about the appropriateness of what the state's doing with respect to the city in terms of financing the obligations that we take on for the poor citizens of the community, both in educating them, and now it turns out that there may be a shortage on our revenue side because of their actions as well.
Exactly. Whatever you can find out, I appreciate it.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilor. Thank you, Mr. Condon. Councilors, the question's on the budgets for the DPW Department, and will the clerk please read the roll on that matter?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Cruz. Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Ten in the affirmative.
Counselors, the final question is on the budget for fiscal year 2015 as amended. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Those orders, 29 through 42, the question is on adoption by a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stidinski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Those orders hereby adopted, councilors. Mr. Clerk, number 29, please.
Audit that pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E in one half, city council authorizes the establishment of a revolving fund for fiscal year 2015 consistent with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 139A. The Animal Control Revolving Fund shall receive the deposits for the spray of neutering of animals. Expenditures would be restricted to not more than $5,000 annually for the purposes permitted by Chapter 140, Section 139A. And council, June 10, 2014. Refer to committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Counselor Cruz.
Mr. President, make a motion that we take items 29 through 42 collectively.
Second. Motion's made, properly seconded, to take collectively, agenda items 29 through 42. All in favor of that? Please raise your hand. All opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Clerk, read 29.
This would be a revolving fund for the sole purpose of funding the Keep Brockton Beautiful program. A revolving fund for the composting bin distribution program for the municipal recycling grant, executive office of environmental affairs, and Department of Environmental Protection. Revolving fund for the pocket authority violation fines. Revolving fund for the manning and cause growth pools shall not exceed $80,000, shall be limited to the spending purposes for ordinary maintenance expenses to operate the pool. Revolving fund for the sole purpose of funding of the acquisition and installation of grave liners. Revolving fund for the demolition of buildings in the city of Brockton. Revolving fund for the sole purpose of funding the creation and maintenance of the abandoned building registry as well as the closing and boarding up of vacant and abandoned buildings. Revolving fund in connection with the operation of the War Memorial Building. Revolving fund for the police department, closed cases. Revolving fund for fiscal 215 for the sole purpose of spending by the police chief for ordinary maintenance expenses of the police department. Revolving fund for the K-9 unit of the Brockton Police Department. Revolving fund for the auditor public records request for the sole purpose of reimbursing departments for the cost of complying with requests for public records. Revolving fund in the acceptance and expenditures by the women's commission of receipts and donations from various events. A revolving fund for the cash receipts from Comcast.
Councilors, collectively, 29 through 42, the question is on adoption by a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois. Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stidinski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative.
Those orders, 29 through 42, collectively, are hereby adopted. Mr. Clerk, 43, please.
Audit that the city council authorizes the approval of a net metering power purchase agreement between Nugent Capital Management LLC and the city of Brockton. This agreement is for the purchase of solar power from a solar plant which will save the city in electricity costs.
That is referred to Finance Committee.
Audit that the city council authorizes the mayor to enter into the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Abington, city of Brockton, for transport and treatment of wastewater from Abington and transmission. This agreement is intended to supersede and replace the current agreement between the parties.
That is referred to Finance Committee.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
I'd like to make a motion to take number 45 under suspension of the rules and act on it this evening due to the nature of summer session.
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded, to take a 45 and act under suspension of the rules tonight. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Counselor.
Audit that the Brockton DPW is authorized to issue a single-family home sewer connection to the owners of the land located at Zero Clermont, Havant Hill, Brockton.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
I move for reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail.
Second.
Motion for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail is properly seconded, all in favor of reconsideration? All opposed, motion for reconsideration does not prevail. Thank you.
An appropriation of $130,000 from the stabilization fund to MSBA Accelerated Repair Program for Asheville Middle School, Barrett Russell School, Brookfield School, Gilmore School, Early Childhood Center, and audit provide funding to collaborate with the MSBA in conducting a feasibility study for potential roof, boiler, window, and door replacement at the named schools. However, for the record, the stabilization fund balance prior to a favorable vote is only 2.4 million. Additional future funding from city sources will impose a significant financing challenge, even with state assistance at 80%. The certification letter is not applicable to these future costs, which will likely be from borrowing with city council approval to be sought at a later date.
Refer to Finance Committee. Counselor Stedenski.
Mr. President, I'd move to take the number 47 under suspension of the rules due to the fact that it is grant money and it has to be used during the good weather, which is now here and won't be for long.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion made properly seconded to act on number 47 under suspension of the rules, all in favor? All opposed, that motion carries. Mr. Clerk.
An appropriation of $10,000 from Mass Department of Highway via the Old Colony Planning Council, fiscal 14, Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program for Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Grant to Brockton Police via the Old Colony Planning Council, fiscal 14, Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program for Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Grant Fund. These overtime grant funds will be used to help the Brockton Police Department step up enforcement specifically related to the pedestrian and bicycle issues in the form of issuing citations, warning, and tracking feedback. There is no required match from the city.
Questions on confirmation by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Annapolis.
Yes.
Dubois. Yes.
Ioneiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Appropriation is hereby granted and adopted.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Move for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Motion for reconsideration in hopes it doesn't prevail is properly seconded, all in favor of reconsideration? All opposed, motion for reconsideration does not prevail. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, sir.
An appropriation of $89,969.70 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistant, fiscal 13, grant to Brockton Police fiscal 13 Justice Assistant Grant Fund. These grant funds will be used to continue the community's proactive approach in assisting victims of domestic and community violence by hiring a part-time social worker to be housed at the Brockton Police Department.
That is referred to Finance Committee.
A resolve that the mayor superintendent of utilities and the members of the Water Commission be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss the rates charged for water in the city.
That is referred to Finance.
Resolve that the representatives of the Department of Public Works be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss the possibility of implementation of uniform trash barrels.
Refer to Finance. Councilors, we're going to go back to agenda item number three. Is the petitioner here, Ingrid? Time hasn't arrived, but I'm going to declare the hearing open. Anyone here in favor? If so, come forward, state your name. Anyone here? Councilors, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Motion made properly seconded to postpone till the next city council meeting, which will be the fourth Monday in June. All in favor?
July.
July, I'm sorry. Jeez, the summer's going away.
Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor.
I think there's a gentleman in the back that might be.
Oh, Counselor, you're here, someone's here. Please come forward, sir.
We almost.
You're going to revoke the motion, Counselor? Counselor, you revoking the motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Motion is hereby revoked, sir.
Councilman, I got a question for you. I'm looking at the petition that.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Yes.
Are you here relative to this matter?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is open, you need to state your name to the clerk, please.
Yes, Jim Pearson, engineer from National Grid.
Thank you, sir.
Question for you, and I'm looking at the description of the petition. The petition that I wrote should say Montello Street, Ingrid to install four four-inch conduits concreting case between Manhole 226 and Manhole 11 Montello Street at War Street, also known as Petronelli Way, approximately 31 feet. New conduits are required due to National Grid extending primary power to the residents at Center and Main Street in the Enterprise Building. With that, there was a sketch that also went along with it, because I was reading the description that he had, and it's not matching what I got right here.
Hey, you know what, we're going to take a two-minute recess. I'll.
[coughs]
Very good. [inaudible] We're legislative council.
The applicant would like to withdraw, so a motion to grant leave to withdraw.
Councilors, motion to grant leave and withdraw, I'd like to entertain that. Someone make a motion on that?
I make that a motion.
So moved.
It was properly seconded?
Second.
All in favor of that motion? All opposed? Withdrawal motion is hereby granted. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
I have a late file, I would like to present this evening and take it under suspension of the rules.
Counselor, I'm going to, I'm going to agree to that, but as I said from day one, and I want this to be heard by all my colleagues, does any late files? Past presidents have always had the respect and professionalism to know what the late file is. I've said it before, my tenure's concluding quickly, but I'd like to keep that going forward for the next president as well. I'll accept the late file.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Communication from the superintendent of parks requests an authorization to expend grant monies related to the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, fiscal 2015, our common backyard grant, Mulberry Street Playground, to a recreational open space for the citizens of Brockton.
Accepted, placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted, placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to.
That too is accepted, placed on file.
And then we have an appropriation from the, of $125,000 from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEA, fiscal 2015, our common backyard grant incorporating as well as concurring with the allocating of $25,000 from Brockton Redevelopment Authority, BRA, fiscal 2015, our common backyard grant, city contribution to city of Brockton Parks and Recreation Department, fiscal 2015, our common backyard grant funds.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Superintendent of Parks, Mr. Carpenter, Timothy Carpenter is here, but if there's no objection, if people have questions, would it be okay?
Counselor, are you looking to act on the suspension of the rules on this tonight or to refer to FinCom?
I am, I'm looking to act under suspension of the rules on this tonight, and I'll tell you why before the vote. This money is to redo Mulberry Street Playground. This is a street that my mother grew up on, and I remember playing in this playground as a child, but for many decades, it has been fenced off and inaccessible to the residents that live in the community. And through the hard work of Mr. Carpenter and the team at the Redevelopment Authority, they found a grant for $125,000 that's going to allow basketball court and a play unit to be placed on this location to revitalize that playground. It's part of funding that the state gives to create new playgrounds, so the decision was between Tukus and Mulberry, no, I'm sorry, McKinley and Mulberry, and the state found McKinley not, is still being used, there's basketball hoops there, kids are there every day, so they chose to fund Mulberry Street. And the reason I'm asking for this to be taken under suspension of the rules is I spoke with the Parks Superintendent, and he expressed his concern of waiting the two months that it would take to get this approved through the normal process, because they want to get to work right away to try to get this all done before the bad weather comes.
So you made a motion to act on the suspension of the rules?
Yes.
There a second of the motion? Motion made properly seconded to act on this tonight under suspension of the rules, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Anybody have any questions while Mr. Carpenter is here? Seeing none.
Yeah, I have one question, just, and it may have been in the order, I didn't hear this. There's no matching funds, this is totally funded out of that?
There's definitely not a match of the city contribution, but that's coming from the Brockton Redevelopment Authority in the amount of $25,000, and it is a reimbursement grant.